Okay, it looks like, so we're recording. I got the cover slide up. I'm gonna get started, okay James?
Okay, sounds good. So, welcome everyone to this 1500 Gary Boulevard Tree Removal Hearing. I'd like, first of all, to have everyone identify themselves. My name is James Doyle. I'm the Acting Manager of the MTA's Hearing Section. I also do hearings from time to time. Would the parties, starting with Mr. Clip, identify themselves for us?
Yep, Josh Clip, right here.
And for the agency?
Good morning. My name is Liz Bryson. I'm the Gary Rapid Project Manager and I'll be giving our presentation. I'm also joined by two other colleagues who I'll let introduce themselves.
Okay.
Hi there, I'm Dan Kowski. I am the Manager for Implementation under Liz on the Gary Project.
Okay, thank you.
Hi, my name is Amy Fowler. I'm the Public Information Officer on the Gary Rapid Project.
Alright, and so I just wanted to briefly indicate that this hearing is conducted pursuant to the San Francisco Charter, pursuant to notices required by applicable tree removal ordinances. And we're basically following the Public Works Code in terms of procedures. We are holding this session online. The hearing is available for the public to observe and to comment, and the comment portion will be presented a little later in this session. I think you've all received the agenda. We're going to be giving 15 minutes to each side and then five minutes for rebuttal from each side. I have read the briefing multiple occasions from each end, their presentations. And I'm basically ready to to hear the presentations of each party. First of all, just to allay any suspicions perhaps. Our hearing section is part of the financial and IT services with the agency, but we're basically a separate wing. Our hearings are conducted on the basis of standards that requires to be completely independent from the agency. We're not under any agency oversight other than perhaps to be efficient in the way we handle the hearings that come in for various matters that we deal with. We have matters that involve primarily parking citations, tow matters, tow protests. But we also do e-scooter permit denials, scooter and bike, e-bike infractions, taxi-related permit denials, ADA complaints related to transit operations, disabled placard misuse cases, clipper car misuse cases, and shuttle bus permit issues. There's a fairly broad spectrum of cases that we adjudicate, but not under the thumb or oversight of the agency. We conduct these hearings based on the law and the facts that are presented. So with that, let me ask Mr. Clip to initiate his presentation today.
James, before we get into that, I just wanted to go over some background items regarding the meeting.
And let me say initially, before you start, Hakem, we're dealing, we have Hakem Ibrahim here to help facilitate this. He's one of our hearing officers and he's a little bit more skilled with these digital matters than I am or the rest of us. Go ahead, Hakem.
Okay, thank you, James. So just very briefly, before we get into the presentations, I wanted to let everyone know, I made this announcement earlier before we started, that if you're joining us online via the video conference service, you'll be able to view the shared materials presented during today's public hearing. However, if you'd like to make public comments, you will have to dial in using the phone number on the screen. It's 1-888-363-4734. Then enter code 7014320. When I open the phone line for public comment, you'll press 1 then 0 to be placed in the queue for public comment. And each speaker will have up to two minutes to provide public comments. If you prefer to provide comments and/or feedback regarding today's hearing in writing, you can email your comments to hearingsgeneral@sfmta.com. That email address will be monitored during today's meeting, during today's hearing, excuse me. The email is on the screen. For those listening on the telephone, the email once again is hearingsgeneral@sfmta.com. As always, I personally would like to just take a moment to thank our IT department who provides support for today's meeting. Before we get started, I'm gonna just go over very briefly, this was shared with the participants of the hearing, but just so for everyone else, we've already had introductions, and as Mr. Doyle has called for, we're gonna hear from the appellant first for up to 15 minutes. And then we'll have a presentation from SFMTA staff on their proposal. After that, we'll hear from Mr. Doyle if he has any questions of both parties. And then there will be up to five minutes of rebuttal from both the appellant and the SFMTA staff. And then, following rebuttal testimony, I will open up the phone line for public comments. And once the public comment period has closed, we'll turn it back over to the appellant and SFMTA staff for their closing arguments. Mr. Doyle will have closing remarks and then we'll adjourn. So we've already gone into the introductions. Here's the information again on how to participate. And while I have that up, I will just let Mr. Clip know if you want to get ready, just give me one second to bring up your slides, okay?
Sure, thanks. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you, Mr. Clip.
Yeah, so while that's happening, one question I have is about the terminology of me, the appellant. Is there something that I'm not aware of that I'm appealing right now? My understanding was I'm protesting.
You're basically the complainant or protester here. Yeah, that's fine. We're not appealing anything at this point.
Okay, thank you.
Not quite the correct term.
Okay, should I just, so Hakim?
Go ahead. I think it looks like your presentation is up here, and if you want to start, this, we're, let me also, Jason, to add that this is a, this is pretty informal. We're not, you know, we're not so wedded to strict structure and we're gonna be very relaxed here and just feel free to express yourself however you'd like. And we're willing to listen even beyond the 15-minute restrictions that we initially imposed. So whenever you're ready, Mr. Clip.
Thank you. I really appreciate that, Mr. Doyle. And Hakim, I'm sorry, I'm not pronouncing your name correctly.
Hakem.
So what I'll do is, I'll just, when I get to the, when I'm ready to advance the slide, just say, "Next slide." Is that okay?
Perfect, yes. Thank you.
Thank you. Alright, so I'll get started. This is my title slide and I didn't really know what to call myself because I don't have a big team of people behind me, so I just went with "average human." Next slide. So on this slide is a photo of me. I'm a short, white guy with mustache and beard, wearing a green cap and a black hoodie. And I'm standing next to a small bronze loquat tree that I planted out in the avenues with Friends of the Urban Forest. In 1996, I moved from Detroit to attend law school at Golden Gate University. I practiced law for 16 years, specializing mostly in the ADA. And I got tired of litigating because it was an awful way to live, fighting about things that happened years ago. My parents were civil rights activists, which is why I was born in Mississippi. Dad taught music and math at an all-black academy. Mom was a polio survivor and raised all four of us with her one functioning arm. And if my parents taught me anything, it's that we have a responsibility to leave this world a better place. So after 16 years of litigation misery, I formed my own accessibility consulting firm to do just that. Along the way, I started volunteering with Friends of the Urban Forest. I grew up loving trees, climbing in pines, oaks, and maples around my neighborhood. I went to so many FAF plantings that they made me a planting leader, bribing me with a free hoodie, the same hoodie in the photo there, which I've worn for the last 12 years of plantings. The last bullet point I have on this slide is that I'm humbly learning how to be a better ally. I didn't go to law school to make a bunch of money. Back in college, I started a process of examining my own biases and beliefs. I had this idea that because I was raised by civil rights activists, I was therefore not a racist. And I held on to that idea until a college girlfriend, who happened to be African-American, called me out. Determined to either prove her wrong or make it right, I started taking classes: African-American women, African-American literature, then eventually African-Americans and the law, and women and the law. So while I started college thinking I was going into sports medicine, I graduated understanding the power of the law to make change for people who needed it the most. And I wanted to be a part of that change. Every day, I challenged myself to be a better ally, and this comes up a lot in my advocacy with trees. Recently, a Public Works Project Manager previewed my work to a Bayview community leader as the white guy who thinks he knows what's best for the community. I really wish she checked in with me about that first. Ultimately, I partnered with that Bayview community leader and used my advocacy skills to help her get the last $60,000 she needed for her project. Just yesterday, she emailed me, asking me if I would help pick her out some trees, which I'm gonna do. In another example, it was suggested to folks in the mission that because I don't live in the mission, I had no business meddling in the proposed tree removal along 24th Street. Ultimately, I formed a partnership with Caibin de Cuatro community leaders. And together, not only did we manage to preserve half the trees originally proposed for removal, we formed a community team of tree waterers, involved artists to paint cross braces on new trees in the colors of the cultural corridor, and we even held a funeral for the trees that are coming down on Dia de los Muertos. I don't pretend to be perfect or that I don't have biases. I know I do. And it's this knowing that humbles me enough to understand I must always work to be a better ally, including with all the stakeholders behind this project. Next slide, please. Alright, so let's get to the project. Next slide. I appreciate the MTA's acknowledgement that city planning led to the cultural divide, that is, as they call it, the Gary Expressway. My brother Luke is an education coordinator for Abundant Housing LA. And in his Housing 101 class, he explains how cities across the US use freeways and boulevards to destroy and segregate communities from one another. San Francisco is no exception to this history of racist city planning. And now we're taking these small steps to make it right, and I fully support this crosswalk as a symbolic and physical manifestation of the work we need to do to break down the artificial barriers that keep us from one another. I also believe that in the face of irreversible climate change, we need to do it in an integrative way that makes our city as resilient as possible. That in our efforts to make right the sins of the past, we don't make new mistakes that we will scramble to fix in the future. According to San Francisco's Department of the Environment, we have eight years until climate change is inevitable, including a dire need to sequester carbon, something this tree does 24 hours a day, 7 days a week. In fixing our old mistakes, we must not make new ones. Next slide, please. Here's a brief overview of the timeline. At the Public Works hearing on this matter, one commenter mentioned he couldn't believe how one tree could hold up this entire crosswalk. And that's not actually what happened, so I'd like to just review the chronology. In 2015, the MTA began the community engagement process around this project. In January 2017, Public Works was engaged by MTA to evaluate the trees impacted by this project. I think it was around November 2019 that the MTA submitted its application to Public Works to remove this tree. And in January of 2020, that Public Works denied that application. One year later, here we are with the MTA's assertion of jurisdiction and starting the Article 16 procedural requirements from the beginning. Next slide, please. The primary sticking point here seems to be how this tree impacts accessibility. And so I'd like to read what the project manager said on this slide. Quote, "ADA path of travel. It is technically feasible to provide a legal ADA path of travel with the tree retained, but the Public Works ADA Coordinator does not recommend it." In the MTA's own words, "The crosswalk and tree retention can be achieved in compliance with the ADA. It's just not the preferred design. The MTA wants more than what the law requires." "As an access consultant, I am constantly advising my clients to go for maximum accessibility. But every single one of my clients has multiple factors to consider, so we work through those to reach the best possible result, and that's what I'm asking for here." Take the city's OCII project at Second and Folsom, for example. There, the city wanted to take down eight big healthy trees so that a four-foot wide sidewalk could be turned into a nine-foot wide sidewalk. After a lot of negotiating, we agreed to treat retention and were able to achieve compliance and have a sidewalk that allowed people to have a beautiful green canopy, something which science shows increases walkability and usability of outdoor spaces." Next slide, please. As noted earlier, this tree removal application already went through Public Works and the Director of Public Works denied the MTA's request for removal. I've attended nearly every single tree removal hearing since late 2017, so that's around 40 or so hearings, and I'm sure over 1,000 tree removal applications. And I have never once seen Public Works deny a tree removal permit to anyone, a developer or a city-sponsored project, when a conflict with the ADA or conflict with infrastructure was intractable. At 4210 Ocean, for instance, Public Works approved a removal of three large healthy trees, seen in the photo to the upper and left, in order to allow for an accessible path of travel for the public right-of-way to a shopping center. At 544 to 578 Second Street, photo shown on the slide there to the right, Public Works approved a removal for a sidewalk improvement project, and specifically installation of a crosswalk and accompanying infrastructure, exactly what we're talking about here. If Public Works thought the conflict was intractable, MTA would have gotten her permit and we wouldn't be here. The fact that this didn't happen is strong evidence that the MTA didn't prove to its counterpart that the conflict was unavoidable. And the sad aspect to all of this is that MTA didn't trust another city agency to make that determination. I don't see how this does anything but erode public trust in our government, that one agency can't play nice with another and instead made up this entirely new hearing process. MTA is holding the first tree removal hearing in its history because of this one tree. It's remarkable. I'm so tired of hearing that government change is slow, when here is a remarkable display of what an agency has the capacity to do when it has the motivation and the will. Next slide, please. There are two photos here. Oh, there's the MTA's artistic rendering of the crosswalk and a photo of an elderly woman in a different crosswalk. She is hunched over and pushing a cart. Let's first look at the MTA rendering. I understand this position is, "Well, that's not the same tree," which seems odd because a side-by-side sure makes them look the same. And the only information the public has to work with is the information provided by the MTA. So to say now, "Well, that's not the same tree," frankly feels like a closing bell bait and switch. More about this rendering. It features all able-bodied people, mostly middle-aged, healthy adults with no visible disabilities and a group of schoolchildren. I don't see anyone here in a wheelchair, no one using a cane, no service animals. And yet, that's exactly who the MTA says this crosswalk design is for. We're here talking about this design because it's meant to be for people who need protection and may need to rest. And when we start talking about vulnerable humans, perhaps the idea of shade and protection from the sun and wind and rain becomes a higher priority. That's exactly what trees do for humans in our public rights of way. I would humbly suggest the next time MTA makes a rendering, please remember that what you show the public is what we have to go on and what we draw in our imagined worlds says a lot about our priorities. Next slide, please. Here we've got a photo of Public Works employees cleaning up garbage on the city sidewalk using shovels and rakes, one of whom is wearing an outfit akin to a hazmat suit. So one of the arguments against this tree retention was falling needles. As a scientific fact, this type of tree doesn't actually drop a lot of needles. And my guess is that that wasn't fully researched before it was typed out in a draft statement. But since we're talking about needles, let's note how tree needles are hardly the worst kind of needles San Francisco's deal with on their sidewalks every day. Just a little perspective. Also, it doesn't seem MTA plans on maintaining this crosswalk. That's Public Works' job. If Public Works, Public Works could have considered this in its removal hearing, if that were something worth mentioning. Next slide, please. There are two photos on this slide. One is a mural on a wall. The mural is of a woman's head, face, and shoulders. The tree canopy draping over the wall has been integrated into the mural as her hair. The second photo is a Banksy-like work of graffiti art. The artwork shows a young child with a paintbrush and a bucket of red paint, standing next to the painted words, "I remember when this was all trees." Anyone who's spent time in nature knows there is no art more beautiful than what our world naturally creates. Humans can't compete with Mother Nature, and perhaps we should think more about incorporating that beauty into our art. Also, I was talking to my wife recently, who's an artist herself, about the art panels, and I told her I thought they were really beautiful and important. And the first question she asked me was, "Did anyone ask the artists how they felt about an obstructed view of their work necessitating a tree removal?" So I told her I'd ask you that question. Next slide, please. This is a photo of the site as it currently exists, showing installation of the crosswalk curb ramps and streetlights and demolition work within the median. I've had several tree removal cases already where the city or developer installed the infrastructure prior to that hearing that supposedly necessitated the tree removal. And frankly, it infuriated those decision-makers because at that point, there was no decision left to be made. Somebody else already made it by investing thousands of taxpayer dollars and locking in their preferred design, as apparently the MTA has already done here. So it's hard to understand as a member of the public why we're even having this hearing, or whether this hearing is being held in good faith. Next slide, please. This slide shows two photos, one of a vandalized cherry tree and the other of a person, a photo of the person actually vandalizing the tree. As a planting leader with Friends of the Urban Forest, I know too well that many new trees die on our public rights of way. The main reasons are lack of water and vandalism. So promising a bunch of new trees sounds great on paper, but it's not so great in reality, especially when those trees are small statured. The community around Japantown had firsthand experience with this when historic cherry trees were violently vandalized outside the Japanese Cultural and Community Center in January of this year. And I want to express my condolences to any stakeholder on this call for your loss. When I learned about this, I reached out to the center to ask how I could support. When their GoFundMe was announced, I shared it with FAF for their newsletter, posted it to social media, shared it with my youngest brother who lives in Japan, and made my own donation. I have to say, it was overwhelming to watch the global support that poured in. It's clear to me that in a world struggling mightily with xenophobia and so much of that directed at Asian communities, there is still so much love in this world and so much hope for healing. Next slide, please. This is a chart of tree plantings and removals taken from the San Francisco's Annual Urban Forest Reports, and these are numbers as self-reported by the MTA. This project seems proud of its promise to plant 16 trees and only remove three, when it had originally planned to remove so many more. I would humbly suggest that based on the MTA's tree planting and removal history, this is nothing to be proud of. If you don't include the Gary BRT, the SFMTA has reduced our canopy by 11 trees in the last five years. And since MTA only works along public rights of way, this seems to violate Article 16's replanting requirements. If you include the 16 trees planned for this project, that means that in the last five years, MTA has added one single tree per year for the last five years. In a city with the lowest canopy percentage of any major city in the United States, we shouldn't be bragging about this. We should be ashamed. Last slide, please. I'd like to close with humble deference to the Japanese proverb which states, "The bamboo that bends is stronger than the oak that resists." Here, I respectfully request that the agency bend its rigid implementation of policy and find an integrative way to retain this native California tree. Our city and our world is in a climate emergency. We cannot afford to cut down the living beings that make us a more connected, safe, resilient city. We cannot afford to cut down living beings that protect the most vulnerable among us. We cannot afford to cut down beings that are doing their best to ensure our children will always have clean air to breathe. I thank you for this time this morning, and I also wish you a happy California Arbor Week.
Thank you, Mr. Clip. This is a very nice presentation. I have some questions. I probably will defer those until after the agency has had a chance to make its presentation. Ms. Raison?
Yes, let me just get my screen up and make sure that you guys can see it. Okay, can everyone see that and hear me?
Yes.
Okay, good morning and thanks for the opportunity to present. Again, my name is Liz Bryson. I'm the Gary Rapid Project Manager. And the Gary Rapid Project is a major transit and safety improvement project that has been under construction since 2019. The subject of today's hearing is about just one of the many planned safety improvements that conflicts with the tree that is the subject of today's hearing. So this rendering shows the planned safety improvement. It's an important part of the overall project. This shows Gary Boulevard looking west. On the right-hand side of the street is a Japantown Peace Plaza. And on the left-hand side, out of view, includes the St. Francis Square Cooperative and the Buchanan YMCA. The vision for this crossing includes installing new traffic signals, crosswalks, as well as a large median refuge where people crossing the street could wait between the two legs of the crossing. And just to zoom in a little bit more on the refuge and clarify a few things, the tree shown immediately to the west of the refuge is not the subject tree of today's hearing. It is a different tree that also happens to be a Monterey Cypress and that would remain. Where the couple in the rendering is shown is approximately where the subject tree is located. I did also want to note that this rendering shows the preliminary design of the crossing. There's a few things that have been modified for, while we, when we went into final design, including moving the streetlight out of the middle of the crossing and splitting it into two on either end to allow for as much clearer, open space to allow people to pass from one end to the other. And I do think it's important to emphasize, the purpose of this crossing really isn't to be a place for people to hang out. It's intended to accommodate large groups of people as they wait between one end of the crossing and the other. I wanted to clarify and add some more detail to the timeline related to this improvement. It is not correct what Mr. Clip said, that we had represented this tree as being able to remain in the crossing. As early as September of 2016, during some of our citywide outreach, we met with relevant tree stakeholder groups, including the Urban Forestry Council's Planning and Funding Committee, where we noted that this tree would need to be removed for the crossing. And we also communicated that again at the August 2018 meeting of the Urban Forestry Council. It's worth noting that at both of these hearings, we did not hear any concerns about removing the tree. And we did get hear feedback about increasing the replacement ratio of the tree, of the replacement ratio of our overall tree planting plan, which we went on to incorporate and exceed. Then, following our agency's standard procedures for the timing of when you seek tree removal permits, in January of 2020 was the first hearing held by Public Works's Bureau of Urban Forestry and denial of the permit. We worked in good faith with the public comments we heard at that meeting, which asked whether it would be possible to provide the crossing and preserve the tree, and also requested that we modify some of the replacement trees with larger statured trees. And so throughout the spring of 2020, we conducted that evaluation, and we also modified our replacement tree plan. And that brought us to December of 2020, where we held a second hearing. And again, the permit was denied because the tree is large and relatively healthy. After that, we found out that SFMTA has charter authority over its own tree removal process for this project and for all SFMTA projects, and not Public Works. So as soon as we learned that, we immediately withdrew our application with Public Works. We vacated, or Public Works vacated their order, and we restarted the process following the noticing requirements of Article 16 of the Public Works Code. I do want to note, this is obviously a little bit complex and unusual of a procedural history. And I think it just stems from the agency not having sort of fully processed and understood its own authorities and set up the right procedures to handle them going forward. So since this has happened, we are already working internally to have a standard way of considering tree removals for SFMTA projects. And this is not a one-off. And this is not a one-off being held by MTA just for this tree, but all MTA projects that require tree removals would follow a similar process going forward. So now I want to outline the five reasons why we do need to remove the tree. So first, the planned crossing is an essential safety and accessibility improvement. Geary Boulevard is a part of San Francisco's high injury network, which means it has a disproportionate share of severe and fatal collisions. Within three blocks of this tree, there have been three fatalities where people have been killed by cars in just the last three years. Most recently was in, I believe, August of last year, which prompted a community meeting around safety with the relevant district supervisors. And we really felt a strong ask to expedite all safety improvements planned in the area to prevent any more loss of life due to traffic fatalities. And there's just such a strong desire to cross in this location because of the surrounding land uses. As you can see, on the north side, we have the Japantown Peace Plaza, as well as the Japantown Center malls. On the south side, the St. Francis Square Residential Cooperative, the YMCA, and the Rosa Parks Elementary School. And the distance to go to either of the signalized crossings at Webster and Laguna is about an average city block of 400 or more feet. And so even though there is no crossing infrastructure here today, it is quite common to see people who are able to cross multiple lanes of a major arterial to get to the other side of the street. Mr. Clip already touched on the importance of this project as reconnecting neighborhoods that were unfortunately divided in the 1960s quote "urban renewal" era. These aerial photographs illustrate just how dramatic the reshaping of the urban fabric was when the eight-line, eight-lane Geary Expressway was constructed, dividing the surrounding communities and causing extreme harm. And you can also see, just for context, the Buchanan Street, north-south, used to be its own north-south street and was lost during that age, but still has the strong desire for people to cross. So the crossing is both a physical reconnection of the neighborhoods divided, as well as a symbolic reconnection. And because of that importance, we've worked closely with community stakeholders who have designed decorative metal panels that celebrate the culture of the surrounding neighborhoods being reconnected. So given the importance of this crossing, both for safety and in terms of reconnecting, we do have strong community and stakeholder support to put in the planned crossing and explicitly to remove the tree in order to make the crossing be everything that we need it to be. There are 27 letters of support included in one of the exhibits to our brief that include all of the organizations and individuals listed on this slide. So that brings us to why it is not possible for us to achieve the safety and accessibility needs of this crossing unless we remove the tree. And there's two parts to that. The first is that it is not possible to shift the crossing east or west in order to avoid trees. And then second, that retaining the tree within the new center median refuge is not acceptable because of the severe downsides it creates for accessibility. So on that first point, this photo illustrates some of the constraints that we are needing to work with in placing the crossing. First, I'd point out the Japantown Peace Plaza stairs on the north side of the street, as well as the sidewalks to the Buchanan YMCA and the sidewalk to Rosa Parks on the south side of the street. And for safety reasons, you'll note that the crosswalk on the south side of Geary is to the west of the one on the north side. That is an important safety feature, so that when people cross from one side to the other, they have to face oncoming traffic before they cross the second direction. And then on top of that, we have the driveways at St. Francis Square. There's two of them. The first is a right turn in only. The second is a right turn in and a right turn out. If we were to move the crosswalk eastwards, we would create a safety conflict with the right turn out. So we can't shift it to the right. If we shifted it to the left, as you can see, we'd hit additional trees. And we'd also be shifting the landings of the crossings further away from the pedestrian paths we're trying to connect. And so that brings us to why we can't retain the tree within the refuge. And so in this figure, I'd like to orient you to a few things. So first, these are the two curb ramps. This is where people would enter and exit the refuge to connect to the two crosswalks. Then, there's the tree itself. The trunk is the brown and green circle shown here. And now I want to talk a little bit about accessibility for people in wheelchairs or other mobility devices. It's important to provide a clear and adequate path of travel so that people in wheelchairs can easily navigate through whatever space you're designing for. And typically, the requirement in ADA is to provide at least 48 inches of clear space, which is about four feet. And there are cases that allow what are called pinch points, where that, that clear space may go down to as low as 32 inches. But that really is a provision for when you're trying to retrofit an existing facility that has no accessibility to get at least a bare minimum. But when you're designing new facilities, not only do you want to meet that 48-inch standard, but you really want to strive for 60 inches because that allows two people in wheelchairs to be able to pass one another. And so you can see the dimensions shown here just north of the tree. We end up with less than 45 inches of clear space and 30 inches to the south. And these measurements do not yet account for the fact that there would need to be a tree well that would add some additional obstruction. And so while, yes, it is technically feasible to meet that 32-inch standard in the ADA, this creates an incredibly inconvenient and unacceptable level of accessibility for a brand-new piece of infrastructure. As you can see, the purple path indicates what someone in a wheelchair would need to do to first travel west away from the direction they're trying to go to get around the tree and then head back east. A secondary issue is that the tree has some branches that are low-hanging and affect locations that are no longer usable for people to wait due to inadequate headspace clearance. And that's roughly the area shown in light brown here. And so the tree is in absolutely the worst location relative to what is supposed to be happening in this part of the refuge, because this is where people would be needing to queue to wait to cross the second direction of the street. And so because of these reasons, the entire project design team, including representatives from MTA and Public Works, including the Public Works ADA Coordinator, who has legal jurisdiction over sidewalk design, did not recommend maintaining the tree within the crossing. Mr. Clip noted a bunch of other factors we included in the evaluation, such as changes in maintenance, et cetera. Those are all relevant, but they're not the driving reason for this. The driving reason is the severe diminishment in accessibility, as well as the crowding issues that the headspace would, the tree would create in terms of obscuring headspace. And then this photo just quickly shows the branches in question. On the south side of the tree, there's a 56-inch branch, and that's right where the crosswalk for the south leg of the crossing would be. And on the north side is the branch that's 71 inches. Finally, we really have done everything possible to minimize removal of trees, respond to public requests related to trees, and exceed mitigation measures. As a part of the environmental review for this project, it was thought that we would need to remove 116 trees within the Geary Rapid Project limits. And we were able to reduce that number down to just three. In addition, while our mitigation measures call for one-for-one tree replacement, we're committed to planting at least 19 replacement trees, which exceeds a six-to-one tree replacement ratio. And finally, we worked to address all the feedback that we received from the prior Public Works Buff hearings, including substituting some of the replacement trees with larger species trees, and conducting the evaluation that I've presented to you today about maintaining the tree in the crosswalk. And so to close, there is a really important safety need for this crossing and an urgent need to deliver it quickly. It is true that some of the infrastructure to support the crossing is already underway because of the urgency of delivering the safety improvement. But we are protecting the tree in place to follow all of the appropriate procedural steps and to not bias the ability for this hearing to take place today. So thanks in advance for considering, and I look forward to the rest of the meeting.
Thank you for your presentation, Ms. Brison. Is it Brison? Is that, do I have that correctly?
It's Bryson. It probably one day was Brison in the past, but it's just Bryson today.
Possibly. So I have a couple of questions. Your presentation. How much, there's, there's a couple pinch points that were brought up. How much would those be increased? Or how much clearance would be reduced by the tree box? Not clear about that. Do you have, do you have some, do you know how large the tree box would have to be in order to get sufficient square footage for watering? Is that going to, is that going to increase the pinch point?
Are you asking me?
Yes.
Yeah. I'm wondering if Dan can answer that because it's a sort of technical question. I think that, you know, we hadn't yet, we hadn't designed it to have an approximate dimension, but Dan can probably give you a sense.
Yes, that is a good question. From my understanding, it cannot be determined until we start the excavation and know where the roots are. And so that's why that information is not provided in the brief. Typically, these are at least, you know, four feet by four feet. So this is more than just a couple inches that would be lost to the, to, to the pinch points.
It's going to create more, so a tree box is going to create more of an access issue. It seems so.
Correct. See, I think that we showed 45 and 30 inches as the pinch points. Those, those would be reduced. Because we don't know the extent they'd be reduced, we presented it as unbiased as possible, showing the maximum. But in reality, you can't pour concrete up to the trunk of the tree. It's just not possible.
Right. Well, that wouldn't work for the tree.
So yeah, but until we, until we do the excavation to figure out where the roots are, we could do the design. As, you know, as Liz presented, we are recommending strongly the removal of the tree. Depending on what the decision is, we'd have to look into the tree box more.
Okay, thank you. So I was wondering about the extent to which the median refuge is going to be occupied by large groups. Do you folks have any information about how much, how many people might need to be crossing at one time? Are there schools nearby or?
Yeah. Thanks for asking that. It's something we touched in the brief, but I didn't describe in my presentation. But, you know, the Rosa Parks Elementary School is nearby, as well as several other organizations that have youth programs. And so one of the specific design drivers for the refuge was to accommodate groups of up to, I believe it was 60, 60.
Eighty, at least.
Eighty?
During the design phase, which was pre-pandemic, the groups could be up to 80 people. There'd be about four to five chaperones and 80 children was the design.
Okay, thank you. And is the median refuge large enough to handle that with the tree remaining present or not? Do you have any figures about how, say, 80, how much room 80 kids would, would take on the median?
Our design showed 50 to 60 feet is adequate for that, assuming no obstructions. I, if you look at the, the square feet under the light brown area in the diagram that Liz showed, it's not a significant percentage of the square feet overall. So it's likely they could be accommodated, but the problem is it's at the worst spot possible where, where those, those groups of people would be waiting to cross and, you know, looking for the pedestrian signal across the street. And there'd be a tree right where they're waiting. And so sure, 80 people could still squeeze in there, but.
Yeah, if we could keep that, keep this diagram up.
Oh, yeah, that helps, that helps. So.
You're doing that or you guys. So the tree basically on the, on the west side, where people queue up to cross the street southbound, the tree basically looks like it somewhat blocks the access to the crosswalk.
It directly blocks it, yes. And it takes up space where people would, would desire to wait. But, but your question before is, could they physically fit in the median? Yeah, they could be to the east of there. You can see like that, that brown circle doesn't take up a huge percent of the median. It's just the location of it is, is right where.
Yeah, yeah, it seems more like a.
Yeah.
The, now, when the DPW Director denied the permit for the removal of this tree, I guess it was March of 2020. Was the director, did the director know the dimensions of the median at that time in reference to the location of the tree? And did the director have details as far as the possible restriction of wheelchair access because of the tree? Did, was that available to the director at that time?
You're asking about, there were two different hearings held by Buff and then decisions by the Public Works Director. The first one was in January of 2020. And at that point, the evaluation that was done to inform the diagram we're looking at had not been done. We did that in response to the feedback we heard at the hearing.
Yeah, but then this, this diagram itself was not created until last week. So at the presentation in December, so yeah, there was, there was no evaluation. Well, during the preliminary design phase in between 2016 and 2018, the need to remove was identified, but the, the evaluation was, was more conceptual. So the feedback we heard from the January meeting was to do a much more detailed one. And so that's why we assembled the group of specific experts between Public Works, including the Urban Forester, as well as landscape architects in ADA, you know, curb ramp designers, to do a much more detailed, specific look at this exact location and actually measured it in the field and, and kind of got all of this information together. When we, when we looked at that, we compiled it into, into different factors so our team can make a recommendation. And that's why, that's why we took back to the Public, Public Works Hearing Officer our recommendation. At that time, just based on information I heard from the Urban Forester, it seemed a little bit more procedural because they were, they kind of saw our evaluation and were, seemed like they were on board with understanding the needs. And so that presentation was three minutes long. It's a different format than this one. And I presented at that one, and I could admit that I did a poor job, you know, getting everything across. So to answer your question, no, the director did not have, you know, specific information regarding the exact dimensions, nor did they have this diagram because it was just created.
The director didn't have this diagram?
They did not, no.
Right. So if, if, if there was some pruning done to the tree. Right. So, if, if, if there was some pruning done to the tree, I don't know if it's possible or not, but I, I see that one branch at fifty-six inches certainly couldn't be pruned. It's, seems to be larger than that would be, that feasible, but would, would pruning help to facilitate the remaining, the possibility of keeping the tree there?
Yeah, I took dimensions of those, of those branches last week. There's six major ones, including the one fifty-six inch one that you just mentioned. That one has a circumference of forty-six inches with a diameter of about seventeen inches. As you mentioned, that's, that's major.
Yeah, that's a major.
Yeah, and so, but, but, so there's six major ones can be pruned, but, but there are, we don't really mention this, or it's kind of hard to see in the picture, but there are a bunch of kind of like twigs and smaller leaves. Those would have to be pruned just to protect people's eyes and, you know, heads. That, that type of pruning could be done, but the, you know, pruning of the actual physical branches, from my understanding, just with quick discussions with the arborists, which that's not, yeah, shown.
So, Mr. Makowski, the, the rest of the trees along Geary here look like they're also cypress.
That's not true. There, there are twelve trees in this row. This photo is looking east towards Laguna Street. The six trees starting from Webster to Buchanan are Monterey Cypress. They're all of similar stature. The one just east of this tree is also Monterey Cypress, but after that are six Canary Pines. Those are, some of those are actually bigger than these Monterey Cypress. They're all large stature and healthy, according to our tree survey. So, this is one of twelve trees, and six are Monterey Cypress, including the two adjacent to it, and then six on the east end are Canary Pine.
The, so, is this tree, is this particular tree at fifteen hundred Gearys healthy?
The evaluation from the arborist is, it is sustainable. It's relatively healthy. There are, there are trunk wounds and dieback. And if you look at a zoomed out picture, you can see there's some bare spots, but overall, the tree, if you had to put in one word, is healthy.
And if, I think you folks talked about larger statured trees that would be replaced or added to Geary Street if, if this one were taken down in terms of immediate mitigation. What, what kind of larger statured trees would be contemplated?
The plan is for them to be London plane trees?
No, yeah, that's, that's the plan. We've worked closely with the Public Works Arborist on this.
What's meant by larger status?
Yeah, let me read it from the plans here. So, the, yeah, London Plane is the main one. Those would be twenty-four inch box, and those are similar size. There's also cork oak. Those would be twenty-four inch box, and then New Zealand Christmas Tree, twenty-four inch box. And so, there'd be one, you know, there'd be eight on this specific block nearby. But many of those eight, half of those eight are cherry trees. Those would be considered smaller stature, and those are for the identity of Japantown. But the others, including another one on the median, just east of here, would be one of these larger statured trees.
And would they be interspersed between the existing trees on the other medians?
On this block, there's one just east of this photo by the next streetlight. It's tough to see. And then the other ones would be east of here.
And they'd be on the medians. We're not, not talking about the side of Geary. We're talking about median trees that would be added.
Only a few are on the median. Many of them are on the sidewalk.
Okay. So, there's some, there's also a question about a surface tree root that I wasn't clear about. A large tree root that was potentially going to interfere with construction on the median? So, is that, has that been verified, or is that just speculation, or what's, what's happening?
It's, it's similar to the tree. Well, it can't be verified until excavation begins. So, depending on the decision, the sidewalk would be removed and the elevations could have to be adjusted to minimize damage. An arborist would be on site to evaluate the root. It's likely it's over two inches, which means they'd probably recommend not cutting it. And, and we'd have to work around it, so.
How, how do you work around something like, like a, a root that's fairly close to the surface?
You'd have to increase the elevation of the sidewalk, or it would be up to the arborist to make a recommendation. But, but it could potentially make accessibility even worse, depending on what the results are. The location of it from this photo is just east or to the right of, running from the trunk of the tree towards the center of the median.
Okay, it runs, it runs lateral, laterally down the street.
Yeah, along, just in between those purple and yellow lines.
Right, okay, all right. So, some of the people that had written in to, in response to, I guess, requests from Urban Forestry about the project seemed to be focused on the fact of the, the value of the crosswalk at this location. Not so much whether the tree needed to be removed. I mean, they, they somewhat added that, but it's not, I, I think the, the median wasn't contingent on the existence of the, the tree there. In my, in my view. So, some of those comments seem to be a little misplaced, but some people were saying that the, they thought that the tree wasn't, was gloomy, or not the correct species for the location. I don't know that that, that's anything that, so can be very strongly credited here as reasons to remove the tree. It's not out of place along Geary as, as a species, is it?
No, well, we just went over the, that there's six.
Yeah, there's other, there's other Monterey Cypress along there, so. It seems like the main objection that the agency has with respect to the tree is based on access for wheelchairs and mobility devices. Would you agree with that? Is it, is that it?
I would say accessibility is the biggest concern, and then in addition, just the location of the tree relative to that south curb ramp will make it much more inconvenient for anyone needing to cross there, and particularly when there's larger groups of people that all need to cross at the same time.
Okay, yes, that's.
You know, our, our objective is not to just barely meet a legal threshold of what might be acceptable. It's to provide, you know, a generous, easy to navigate crossing for an important group of stakeholders in the area.
Right. Okay, so a couple of questions for you, Mr. Clip. You still with us, sir?
Still here.
Okay. I guess, if I, if I can understand your objection correctly, it, it sounds like this is a little more than just an air quality issue for you in terms of, in terms of what sequestration of carbon might be lost for the, for the removal of this tree. We're not talking just about that, are we, aren't we?
No, I, I, and I think that's the thing is that this is, that I am acknowledging that this is complicated. There's a lot of nuance here, and there's a lot of factors that we're trying to account for. And, you know, we're, we're, we're trying to build this crosswalk. And again, I, I have no problem with a crosswalk. I, I think it's the right idea. What I think we're not considering is how to make it usable in a way that's good for humans and good for our environment. I would point out that a crosswalk for eighty kids is a great idea next to a school, but let's just point out that the southern landing of this crosswalk is between these two massive driveways. And is it realistic that you're gonna have two chaperones or four chaperones and eighty children standing in between two massive driveways on Geary? The other thing I would point out is that this, the width of this crosswalk, as Ms. Brison pointed out, is so that we could have two wheelchairs crossing at the same time. On the northern side of this crosswalk, when you take, when you go north from that median to the mid-block there of Geary, that lands you at the bottom of a staircase, a staircase to, to the Peace Plaza. So, if you are using a wheelchair, you still have to go all the way to Laguna or all the way to Webster. If you want to go, if you want to get to Japantown. So, what's more likely to happen is this will, this crosswalk will not be used by wheelchair users. They, they're gonna have to go to Laguna or Webster. So, it, it, it seems like we're not really thinking about the, the reality, the, the ideals. I agree with the ideals, but the reality is different. And especially when you add this, you add the issue of the dire need to, to preserve, to preserve the mature, healthy tree that is doing the work that we need it to do. I'm saying we need to be, have an integrative approach that thinks about how real humans are using this space and what real humans need for our, for our future.
Well, what about?
Can I respond to that?
Go ahead, Ms. Bryson.
Thank you. So, if, Hukem could go back to, I think it's like this slide prior to this one. So, I wanted to point out that there is an ADA ramp to the Peace Plaza. It's called out in pink in the top right of this diagram. And so, it is not correct that people in wheelchairs would need to go all the way to Laguna or Webster to get in. We did look at whether the crossing would make more sense moved further to the east towards that ramp. However, the cross slope, the slope across Geary Boulevard gets steeper, and so that makes it less preferable and more difficult for someone in a wheelchair to navigate. And this, the location that we have sighted it in is just as preferable in terms of the overall distance that a person in a wheelchair would need to travel to get into the Peace Plaza.
Okay, thank you. The other, the thing, other thing that's crossed my mind is this, this crossing here is so large, so probably, probably the lights wouldn't be synchronized so that somebody could cross the eastbound lane and then still have time to cross the westbound lane. I imagine they'd be on different schedules or different cycles so that you, people would have to wait in the median.
Yeah, that's correct.
All right. So, Mr. Clip, the, what, in terms of mitigation or the planning that the DPW or the agency would have to do in order to replace or, or mediate the removal of this tree? What, what would it take for you to, I mean, how many other exceed to the process? I mean, I'm just wondering what kind of, if, if you were able to negotiate this, what would you, what would, what would be acceptable to you?
I appreciate your, you're asking that question, and, you know, the reason I have a footnote in my brief that when I use the terms bad faith, I'm not talking about Dan Makowski is because I've had several conversations with him while this was sort of in process with Public Works, and I appreciate that he took the time to do that. And he and I talked about a lot of that, and it, you know, that was a year ago, and nobody's come back about it since. And even though, as I understand, after the Public Works Hearing, there was some more discussion about the design of the crosswalk, whatever, I, I wasn't included in that, which was a little surprising. But all that to say, to answer your question, I think there are a lot of things, and I don't have, I was not prepared to have that conversation today, but it's a conversation I would be more than happy to have if given them, if given the opportunity to come up with, with some ideas around that. It is something that we've discussed in terms of biomass replacement formulas. We've talked about wood reuse. We've talked about incorporating this tree into the art, whether it's still standing or not. But, you know, there are lots of ways to do it, but those are not, my ideas have not been received, and I don't feel prepared to talk about those in detail right off the cuff today, but I would be glad to.
Well, in terms of, in terms of, I'm still not clear as to what the agency is talking about in terms of larger statured trees and how much they could expect to sequester carbon dioxide or however they would be able to replace the, the cleansing process that occurs from this existing cypress?
Sure, I, I mean, I could give you a little information about that sort of generally, if you, if you would like.
Sure, I mean, I, I, yeah, I don't have much background with this.
Yeah, so there's, there's a couple of things. First of all, there are the planting requirements that are triggered by Article sixteen, which is basically, you know, when you're doing a certain amount of construction, the, whoever is doing that is required by law to plant a certain amount of trees relative to the size of that construction. And that's usually what you're talking about in terms of the street trees. So, you know, even if you look at this, at this photo that Liz has up right now, you can see there's plenty of room for planting new trees there in basins that probably should already exist and probably should already have trees. So, so that's the first part, and that's just Article sixteen. But what I'm talking about is the, the scientific research that shows that a mature tree captures carbon in a much more efficient rate than a new tree. And this tree we're talking about is, I believe, an almost thirty-inch DBH Monterey Cypress. So, one can go and go into iTree and figure out how environmentally efficient that is. When you're talking about a new tree, new trees tend to be, I think Dan mentioned twenty-four inch box. Correct me if I'm wrong, but what that sort of translates into is a one and a half to maybe two-inch DBH tree. So, now you're talking about much.
What does that mean?
DBH is the, is the diameter of the trunk. So, the DBH of the, of the tree at issue here is almost thirty inches. So, it's, you know, two and a half feet wide, and the DBH of a new tree, a fifteen, I'm sorry, a twenty-four inch box is typically around one and a half to two inches. So, you're losing two feet of tree trunk if you just replace this one for one. So, one of the ideas that I brought up to Dan, first of all, I was the one who brought up to him, I, I'm sure Public Works did too, the need to replace with larger statured trees. Originally, there was a, a push for mostly cherry trees along this quarter, which I understand from a cultural perspective, and I, and I respect that. And these are lar, this is a large right-of-way with a lot of space for a new tree, which is pretty uncommon in San Francisco. We have very dense, narrow rights-of-way where it's hard to plant large trees elsewhere in the city. So, when you have a big public right-of-way, you need to maximize that with the largest statured tree possible. So, that was something that I pushed for in those conversations with Dan more than a year ago now, I, I think. year ago now, I, I think. Time is relative in COVID. So.
Mr. Clip, if, if, if this tree of, let's say it's got a diameter of 40 inches, I, I don't know what it is, but it's, it's probably not that much, but.
30 is accurate.
Thirty, okay. So let's say it has a diameter of 30 inches. If, if, if six trees having diameters of five inches each were used to replace this tree, would that equal the carbon capture, CO2 capture?
Eventually, yeah. And that, that is something that I talked about with Dan early on was implementing a biomass, it's called, that what you're describing is called a biomass replacement formula. So if you take out one tree that's 20, that's got a 24-inch DBH, a biomass replacement formula would call for replacing it with 12 trees that have a two-inch DBH. So you get, you don't.
Right, right. Okay, so there's a certain, there's a certain equivalence there?
Yes.
Because of, that's, that's not so much based on the actual trunk size, it's, it's got to be based on the amount of leafing that the trees are producing.
I mean, different trees sequester carbon at different rates. That is correct. So if you were to take out a Monterey Cypress, for instance, which sequesters very efficiently and you put in a bunch of olives, you wouldn't get the same environmental benefits.
Right.
Same is true with, unfortunately, with cherry trees.
And what, again, Mr. Makowski, what, what were the types of trees that have been considered as mitigation or replacement for this one?
London plane, cherries, cork oak and New Zealand Christmas tree.
And do you have the, the dimensions of those, those larger statured trees in terms of diameter?
Everything Josh said is accurate in terms of diameter.
So you would, you would try to be, you would try to have an equivalency there in terms of the, the replacing trees if that were done?
We do. I'm sure we'd exceed it if you do the math that, that we just did there. When I talked to, you know, a year ago, I, we've said multiple times, I've listened to Josh, when I talked to the Buff, the Bureau of Urban Forestry Arborist about biomass replacement, their understanding was that that would be hundreds of trees, not six.
And so, is this, Mr. Makowski, is, is this something that, that you and Josh could work out if?
Yes, we already have.
Some kind of an agreement that we could devise that, that would, that would, if, if the tree were removed, if I decided the tree would be removed, that you would work with Mr. Clip in order to find acceptable replacement trees? Is that something that?
Yes, it's actually something that's already in the works and just something that we can't commit to until a decision has been made because the decision is going to dictate, you know, other, other things. So once a decision is made, then we can, on the tree removal, then I have been working with Josh and I'm happy to keep working with him. I'm also working with people who likely would talk during this public comment, I meet with them in the field and, and, and hear what they have to say. And that's how we, you know, get to these replacement, you know, planting plans. That's how it includes cherries. That's why, how it can include more. And so if, if we just did them.
You're willing, you're willing to do, you're willing to do the work.
I'm saying, I already have and I am willing to continue and I will, yes.
Mr. Clip, how would that sound to you if you were brought into this process more, more directly?
I wasn't aware there was a conversation still happening about this. So that's, that's news. I am grateful for the opportunity to do that. And I think, I'm curious how, how we would imagine that happening realistically because I think at the last, the last time I talked to Dan, he was very optimistic about the opportunity, the idea of, you know, striving for a biomass replacement. You know, maybe we don't hit it, but maybe we come close. But then the last I heard was, yeah, there's no budget for that. So I don't want to start a conversation that there's no, you know, there's no money behind.
Well, I'm conceivably, Mr. Clip, I, my decision could require that there be a biomass replacement if I decided that the tree should be removed.
I, I would just encourage you to make sure there's specific language because when I talk to the arborist, there's different ways that the International Society of Arbiculture, ISA, determines replacement formulas and biomass replacement could be taken to mean the weight of the tree and that could mean hundreds of trees. And so the, the discussion that we just had with Josh where it's six trees to one is, is manageable and that's something that, that would be, you know, welcome for you to write in. But, but, you know, but if you're just going to blanketly say biomass.
I understand.
Josh changes his conversation tomorrow and says, now I want 100 trees, you know, 200 trees, 300 trees, then that's like something, we can't commit to the budget.
Right. I can understand that.
Yeah, I, I just want to clarify for, you know, it would be, I think we've demonstrated we've tried to work collaboratively with everyone who has a stake in anything about this project and we're still committed to doing that. We do have a reality of a certain project budget and so I think just recognizing like we want to go as far as we can while maintaining something that's feasible. And like Dan said, if it's 300 trees, I think that is not feasible within our project constraints. So I just wanted to keep that in mind when we think about whatever the outcome of the hearing is going to be.
Yeah, I understand. Now, in terms of my decision in this prob, in this case, are you folks under constraints as far as getting, getting this moving as far as the construction?
Dan, do you want to address that?
Yes. This, this decision directly impacts when we can make this crosswalk operational. If the tree were to remain, then that introduces more design work that we need to do. If the tree's removed, then we just do the work per plan and the crosswalk gets built faster. The, you know, the panel is already being fabricated, everything is ready to go, we just need a decision. And this is, as Liz mentioned, this is a high priority for the district supervisors, it's a high priority for the people on the call, it's a high priority for safety in this area to, to build these things.
So I think that's kind of covers pretty much my, the questions I had and the, we can do, we can do some rebuttal at this point or we could take some comments, Hukem, if we have any, from folks who might be online or queued in the phone system. Do we have any?
I think it's number, so maybe, Hukem, you could put that number back up so anyone could know what to do. That, there was a series of things that had to happen for public comment.
Yeah, I was, I was getting that ready now. It's, it's up to you, James. I do have, I can tell you.
I'm happy to, I'm happy to take, what, what we can do now, we're kind of running a little over, but I'm happy to take any comments we have and then to have the rebuttal based on any comments that may come in and, and then we can conclude.
Okay, yeah. So as Mr. Doyle stated, we're going to open the meeting now for public comments. Again, as I mentioned earlier, if, or if you joined us late, if you're, if you're online and you're watching the, the video online, you have been able to view the shared materials. But in order to provide public comment, you will need to phone in and the information is, is on the screen. You have to call in at 1-883-634-734, then enter code 7014320 and pound. Once you've dialed in, press one then zero to be placed in the queue for public comment and each speaker will have up to two minutes to provide public comments. Let me open the line now.
Your conference is now in question and answer mode. To summon each question, press one then zero. Each question will be asked in the order it was received.
So again, if you're, if you're on the line, press one then zero now, you'll be placed in the queue for public comment. If you need to dial in, the information is, is on the screen, dial in to provide public comment. Also, at the bottom of the slide, again, we're taking feedback online. So if you wanted to submit written comments, I know we've had some emails already come in. Again, you have the opportunity to provide those comments via email. The address, the email address for that is hearingsgeneral@sfmta.com. Again, we've had some comments and so we'll be reading those after we take the live public comments.
Yes, I'll be reviewing any comments that come in late over the next week or so, if that happens, as, as part of my process in terms of reviewing everything.
You have six questions remaining.
Hi, my name's Richard Hashimoto. I've lived and worked in this community since 1960. I currently live on the south side of Geary and I work on the north side of Geary. So I do illegally jaywalk across Geary almost every day. And, you know, since working in this community, I've noticed so many accidents on Geary. If you look up and down Geary, you see the, the outside three lanes. So you, you, you naturally walk across saying, okay, it's open. But then it's the center lane, the fourth lane next to the median that people are traveling in high rates of speed and trying to make the green light, the next green light. And by the time you step off the curb of the median, it's too late to react because that car is traveling so fast. So, you know, the crosswalk is very much needed for ones to prevent me from jaywalking and others as well, but then you're adding a safe haven for people to cross Geary. And I fully support this tree removal and I hope that you will as well. There's the ADA ramp issue that, that Mr. Cliff had mentioned. Actually, the Japantown Peace Plaza is going to go through a renovation in two years. And in that renovation, that ADA ramp is going to be moved more towards the, where the stairwells are currently placed. So, you know, just sort of take that into consideration too, that the ramp is going to be moved closer to being more accessible, to a flatter area. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
You have five questions remaining.
Hi, this is Reverend Victor Floyd and my husband Lou Groso. We live at St. Francis Square Co-op. I work at Calvary Presbyterian Church, which is across Geary and up the hill. So I cross Geary every day also. When Lou and I moved to this neighborhood from the mission, we were very excited about being so close to my work because he could come and see me. And he's very good at getting around anywhere in the Bay Area and he is fully blind and very capable. But, so the lighthouse came to, Lighthouse for the Blind came to train him and in the training, they decided that, that Geary is completely unsafe for him to cross. He's been on the community organizing group about this, consulting with the MTA and for the last few years. And we're really excited to get this crosswalk, which will be more accessible, which will be safe. We have a lot of trouble walking down the street when there's trees in the middle of the sidewalk. I'm a minister, I understand how things are interconnected. I under, I don't understand how wanting this tree removed makes me xenophobic or a racist. And I really am concerned that in the picture, I can't tell who has a disability in that rendering. And to look at Lou, you can't tell that he's blind. So I think that is a bit of a stretch for Mr. Clip. Right now, Lou can't come to, you know, can't cross Geary by himself, but he can go to Mountain View. If he can, you know, he can go anywhere else in the, in the Bay Area. We've been watching this really closely and we take walks, we even jaywalked out into the median to check out what's happening in the median. And the tree is the big question that we had, like how in the world do you cross the street with a tree here, even if this were all paved and made accessible in some way? And it, it looks impossible to do that. So I understand that we need trees. God, no. I hope that when you replant trees to make up for this one, it won't be those little Findley Charlie Brown trees that are all over town with the three posts around them that never grow. So I hope you will plant substantial trees that will actually help the environment and we are in favor of removing this tree because we need to get across the street safe. Thanks.
You have five questions remaining.
Hi, my name is John Naughtie. Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead, John.
Okay, great. I have a couple of issues. I have participated in the DPW hearings and so, and I'm a native San Franciscan and I, I have a couple of issues that are being proposed or, or about this project. And I was against the removal back, both times I was sort of in DPW. And the reason is because, one, is it's a major statured tree. If you're going to replace it, it was being discussed by at least six large trees, that those trees also be protected because we've already heard discussed and also was in the news about the cherry trees and Japantown being destroyed. And this is not just a, you know, Japantown issue, this is a citywide issue about any trees being planted. They are vulnerable when they first are planted and sometimes people do, do come around to a new planted tree and it needs protection. So I didn't hear anything about protection of the, the six trees possibly or more that would be planted. Next, we have to deal with the, I'm hearing now that there are changes in the ramps to Japantown. Well, that is all great, but there are three property, two property owners for the whole of Japantown. And right now, because of COVID, the tenants in Japantown, the businesses have not been paying their rent. So I don't understand where all this money is coming from because now you're now dealing with a property owner because this, this, this project is not, no more under redevelopment agency control when it was first established. So this is now, whose money is going to be used to fix the, the ramp? That's one question. And looking at the current ramp, I don't think it could take two wheelchairs going up and down it at the same time and plus all the children that you're saying are going to be standing in the medium, I believe up to 70. So, you know, you're, you're, you're kind of making this sort of a, a, a school boulevard or something. I mean, I was a crosswalk guard when I was a kid and I, so I do know how to, you know, deal with crosswalks. I wasn't, you know, I, I worked with the AAA. So, you know, this is a little much all at once and, 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 and you have disturbed a lot of eyebrows of what you're doing at this project. So, and people are watching. And I thank you for trying to think out of the box and, and, and now, but unfortunately you will have other SFMTA trees being removed and you're not using this process yet. So I'm kind of questioning, how are you going to let people know about the other removals that you have planned? Thank you very much.
You have four questions remaining.
Hi there, my name is Rozar Bell. I'm just going to read a little something that I wrote. Basically, you know, I understand that we all, I understand the need for this crosswalk. I walk this part of Geary very frequently. I've actually witnessed the death of an individual who attempted to jaywalk at this exact spot. And as a lifetime San Francisco pedestrian, native San Franciscan, Fillmore and Richmond resident, I know how dangerous Geary is to cross. So I understand the idea of improving safety, but my question is, at what cost? You know, you might not think that a tree is important, but. But given all of the examples that, you know, for instance Josh has given, I think that it's pretty clear that even an individual large tree is an important thing. And you know, in the city, trees always lose and that's been a constant. There's no doubt that a lot of work went into this plan. But it's also clear that the removal of this large stature, healthy and mature tree was an afterthought. It's entirely disappointing, but unfortunately not surprising that SFMTA has done all that it can to circumvent the previous refusal of removal. And at this point, I have to say that the hearing kind of seems in bad faith. Although I really appreciate what Mr. Doyle has said as far as questions. It seems very thoughtful on his part. You know, I find it very disappointing that the platform, the work on the platform has already started. That to me is very weird. And SFMTA admits that saving the tree is feasible but inconvenient. And the tree and a safe crosswalk can coexist. So you know, if you have tree branches in the way, you know, you can cantilever the branches. I also think that it's not very probable that 80 pedestrians will be crossing at once. And if they cannot, they can just wait for the next light, right? I mean, is that really a problem? I think we all deal with that every day as pedestrians. So you know, San Francisco has the worst urban canopy of any major US city. And I'm wondering actually how much safer this crosswalk will even be crossing Geary. You know, given the history of Geary and the history of bad driving in San Francisco. So you know, we need to do better. The city needs to do better. And I think that you can start with upholding the previous decision to save this tree and demanding that SFMTA provide an environmentally sensitive design that includes the existing tree. So thanks for listening. That's it for me.
Thank you.
You have three questions remaining.
Good morning, my name is Glenn Goddard. I'm the Executive Director of the Sequoias on Geary and Laguna. The purpose of my comments here is strictly on public safety of the elderly. Our community here is one of several senior communities in the Japantown and Cathedral Hill area. The average age of our residents is 89 years old. I represent over 300 residents that live on this site. We have been witness to residents within our community having been hit by vehicles on more than one occasion. We have also been aware of the other deaths and other tragedies that have happened when trying to cross Geary in the recent years. Over the last five years, I've been following all of the different programs and the different discussions on trying to improve Geary in many different aspects. And the number one comment that I wanted to just stress is safety for the seniors. In having an appropriate or an improved crossing that will allow greater access for the seniors to be able to increase shopping, mobility within the neighborhood, and most importantly, give them a chance to cross a very wide six-lane expressway without being rushed, without having to worry about trip hazards or other issues such as their own frailty or their endurance to be able to cross that street in one jaunt. I do respect the trees. I have been, I've been in the Boy Scouts all my life and I love nature. However, the security for the seniors, the safety for the seniors, and anything that we can do to give them a greater quality of life and access to the neighborhood, I think is imperative. I'd like to see this done in a way that basically does promote access, does promote safety, and takes into consideration the very large senior population that is in this neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Mr. Goddard.
You have two questions remaining.
Hello, my name is Karen Kai. And I am a Japantown community stakeholder. I've worked on a lot of projects, including the Geary BRT, now Geary Rapid Project as it was developing. And I'm also a member of the artistic team that worked on the panels for the median. And one of the things I've done a lot is talking with the MTA staff about this median, its size, its design, because I'm also a stakeholder at Rosa Parks Elementary School. And the key issue of having a crosswalk that will hold an entire grade level of students was one that really was responded to by MTA and we are very grateful for that. And it's, we wanted to have a median that would accommodate our classrooms, plus the adult chaperones, plus anyone else who is trying to cross Geary at that same time. And so there has been a lot of discussion with the school community as well as those of us who also represent other youth oriented and children oriented groups in Japantown. And when we asked for this expanded median, we were not setting out to take out trees. But we have also very strongly supported replacement trees, additional trees. We very strongly request that we have cherry trees along Geary because of the cultural importance. I've specifically lobbied for the Kwanzon cherries because they do grow rather large and they are very visible. And they're part of the tree selection that was made by our Sakura 150 project that planted, I think about 100 and, no, they planted 75 trees throughout Japantown. We also have Kwanzons at Rosa Parks that are growing very large now. And so we think that this is a tree that culturally, aesthetically, and physically will be good for this stretch. I know I've talked with some of the St. Francis Square folks who were saying, yeah, okay, if you're going to plant more trees on the bus stop bulb out by St. Francis Square, we'd really love to have some springtime color. So if you're doing the cherry trees, we would like that for a little variety. You know, it's kind of, the forest has many different varieties of trees, not just a uniculture. And you know, there are other possibilities, if this is possible, in the general area to plant larger trees. And I'm happy to continue to work with Mr. McCowsky and MTA and others on finding those spots and getting permission to do some replacement plantings for the biomass replacement. But I think this is, this project has had a lot of thought, a lot of community engagement. And it is truly important to us to have this size, this location, and to have the trees that represent our culture and community. So thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments, Karen.
You have one question remaining.
Yes, this is Deja Bowler. My question is whether it's necessary to have the crosswalk right there, why not farther to the east? And I also want to know how long the signal has to be holding up the traffic for 80 people to cross safely. And furthermore, I don't imagine that the classes at the primary school there are that large if it is. It's a real shame. Anyway, the, they recently, I live in the neighborhood, so I'm aware that recently they retimed the signals up at the corner of Laguna and Geary to make, to give more time for people to get across. And the problem, stopping the traffic at long lights, and an extra light now, even while the lights there are already long, seems something to take into account. I have a note here about put up a barrier, but I don't know what I, I think that would accomplish. I'm just concerned that the necessity of putting the, this, the median waiting area where it is, I don't see why it can't be modified so that the tree will be able to stay because every tree is valuable. So thanks for the opportunity for me to put in my two cents worth.
Thanks for your comments.
You have zero questions remaining.
So James, I have no one waiting, but we did get some emails, including from some people that I see are, had participated in.
Are those fairly short?
Yeah, yeah, I'll go over this first one. It's from Alice Kawahatsu. I'm a longtime resident of Japantown and I'm a board member of the Japantown Task Force. Our committee has worked toward making this new crosswalk safe for pedestrians and visitors and residents. I support the removal of this tree as it is large and blocks line of sight for drivers on both sides. The design of the crosswalk will have new trees planted, which will not block the line of sight of drivers and will be culturally relevant to our Japanese culture. This crosswalk is needed as many people jaywalk and it has become a dangerous hazard for all. Thank you for your time and consideration. Another email, the next email we received was from Richard Eisen. We desperately need this crosswalk and the tree will be replaced. There is no reason to delay this important safety project over a tree. This next email is from Ed Center. My name is Ed Center and I live in St. Francis Square on Geary Street. We'd love to go to Japantown. I have two young sons and safe passage across Geary is of utmost importance to us. I'm advocating for a crosswalk between Webster and Laguna Streets to break up that long block. I will add that as I drive on Geary Street, I frequently have to slow down for jaywalkers who are risking it across a six-lane avenue. At night, it can be difficult to see them. I believe a crosswalk will support community safety and I'm willing to gain that the price of one not very attractive tree. Note, St. Francis Square is filled with trees and plants. Perhaps we can add a tree in our community to offset the carbon and environmental cost of losing the tree on the median strip. This would come at no expense to the city. And then the last email is from Kathy Nelson. Hello, as a businessperson in Japantown for the past 22 years, I would like to give my support for the crosswalk at Buchanan and Geary. This is a longtime issue that needs addressing. I love the trees and believe in the value, but this seems an unnecessary protest. We need a usable crosswalk and if the tree is in the way, then it is one tree. We had a eucalyptus tree in front of Kiwi Springs that we protested the removal of. And I watched far too many sight impaired people hit their heads on it and it changed, and I changed my mind years later. Sometimes trees have to change one for another or two. There are great points to both sides here, but the crosswalk needs to be the priority piece. And that's, yeah, that's the extent of the email, because they're all the emails we've received.
Thanks for going over those comments, Akem. All right, so we're still running quite late. But Mr. Cliff, I'd like to give you a chance to do rebuttal, short rebuttal. And then the agency will have a similar opportunity and then we'll conclude.
Great, thank you, Mr. Doyle. First of all, I want to start by thanking Ms. Kai for speaking here today. She, I'm aware that she has been a champion for our city and quite honestly, I'm humbled that she's participating today. I also want to briefly address the minister's statement that something about opposing tree removal is xenophobic. And I think he really misunderstood, so I would just like to clarify. My point was that the crosswalk has cultural significance and that I, as an imperfect human, am always trying to increase my understanding and incorporate that understanding into my advocacy. Regarding wheelchairs and the ramp, it sounds to me like this ramp, there's some questions about whether the ramp itself is compliant. So I would again assert that, you know, making a crosswalk in this specific location and specifically requiring that the crosswalk be too wide enough to accommodate two wheelchairs seems like a bit of a stretch. I also want to address the timing here. It was brought up that this was presented to the Urban Forestry Council in 2016 and 2018. I'd like to point out that the documentation regarding any ADA assessment doesn't show up until 2020. And so the design was always going to be what it was going to be. Whether accessibility was not considered at the outset. It seems that now we're retroactively creating this documentation to support the design that was always intended. And according to what was said here today, even more documentation was created after the Public Works Hearing, I guess, to shore up this request. I would just suggest that this is the wrong approach, that this should be considered from the outset. So we might be thinking more about tree removal and mitigation. There was a comment that, what's the big deal, this is one tree. I would just like to point out that in 2014, San Francisco rolled out an urban forest plan that called for the planting of 50,000 new trees in the next 20 years. So if you do the math, we should be at an additional 15,000 trees roughly since the time that that plan was rolled out. But if you go back and look at the urban forest annual reports, we've actually lost 8,000 trees. And it happens at hearings just like this, where it's one tree here, one tree there, and what's the big deal? We're just putting in a driveway here or a crosswalk there. And this is how it happens. So you're right, it is one tree. And it's one tree of more than 8,000 that we've lost, not gained a single tree according to our own urban forest plan. And then I'd just like to close by saying, I would be more than happy to discuss resolutions. Look, I got out of litigation because I hate it. And I don't, I don't enjoy being in this type of environment, this sort of, you know, pseudo litigation environment here. I'm not, I'm not a fan. That's, that's why I got out of litigation. I don't like fighting. I like working things out and I believe that that's the only way we're going to figure these things out. I have never advocated for a weight-based biomass replacement formula. I don't even know what that is. My approach to biomass has always been based on diameter. And I also want to know, there's a lot of stakeholders here in terms of the immediate corridor. What I'm talking about here is a CO2 sequestering tree that's an asset to the entire city, not just the immediate community. This is something that is relevant to all of us. So I would be more than glad to work with the agency and any stakeholders to try and find a way to address, most particularly, the environmental aspect of losing a big, healthy carbon sequestering tree such as this one. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cliff. Appreciate your comments. Ms. Bryson?
Thank you. There were a few points I wanted to touch on. First, I did just want to emphasize what a loss to the overall utility of this improvement it would be for accessibility if we had to retain the tree. It seemed like in Mr. Cliff's arguments, he talked about how, you know, the bare minimum might be good enough if it means preserving a tree. But I just think that that is not acceptable. And as you've seen and heard from all the people who have been involved in this process, it is really important that it meets all the goals that it was intended to meet. In preparing for this hearing, I actually talked yesterday to another colleague I know who is an expert in accessibility, just because I personally am not. But based on everything I had read and reviewed, it just seemed like this would be such a tragic loss for the accessibility of the improvement. And when I showed her the drawing, she's like, that's odd, why would you ever do that? And she started to offer suggestions of how you might be able to tweak it one way or the other. But then, you know, we reached the same conclusion. There's really not any way to make this the level that it warrants to provide true good access. And so I know Mr. Cliff also brought up something about the ramp to Japantown. But I think we heard from the Japantown Merchants President, Richard Hashimoto, that there is a redevelopment effort underway that's going to even bring the ramp to the plaza closer and more proximate to where we've planned the crossing. In terms of the comments about the timing of planned the crossing. Um, in terms of the comments about the timing of our process, um, I think it was about com, timing and, uh, production of the documentation about, uh, ADA accessibility. Uh, I guess what I would say is, you know, there are a lot of technical experts that do design work on projects all the time. There's a lot of things they know intuitively and don't necessarily, uh, document to the level we've documented today. Um, we went through that level of effort because it seemed important at this point, but it, it is not the typical process to do that for every single street improvement that we do. Um, a third level of public comments had to do with public trust and concern that we've already started constructing this improvement. Um, that is true, and it is true because this is a really important safety improvement. We've heard from several commenters about how important it is to have the safe crossing. We don't want to see anyone else killed by cars. And as we've all discussed at today's hearing, it is technically feasible to maintain the tree and build the crossing, so we haven't foregone any conclusion. Um, and then finally, some of the arguments about acting in bad faith. Um, one, it didn't come up that much in today's discussion, but it was in Mr. Clip's brief and it was mentioned by one of the commentators, so I wanted to take the te, chance to address, uh, related to, uh, somewhat similar but somewhat, somewhat different situation related to the Van Ness Improvement Project. So I don't personally work on that project, um, but as I mentioned, we are, as an agency, in the process of formalizing our standard procedures for addressing pre-removals, uh, through an MTA-led process going forward. Um, similar to the Geary project, the Van Ness team was not aware of the charter authority when they went through the process of seeking tree removal permits from Public Works. Um, but as soon as they learned, uh, they were preparing to start the process as required, but there was a miscommunication amongst the different players in their construction team. Um, and so they are directly working with Mr. Clip and have responded to his email about next steps on that. Um, but Mr. Clip also noted in his brief, he seemed to imply that the Van Ness team brought on an additional arborist at the end, just to have an opinion different than what the Buff Arborist had said. And I, I wanted to clarify, that is definitely not true. The Van Ness team has their own arborist, um, that they brought onboard in 2016 when construction was beginning in order to advise them on protecting all of the trees that are remaining through that project. Um, one other thing I want to note, um, don't mean to make it too personal, but Mr. Clip also, um, alleged bad faith against me personally in, uh, email correspondence about, uh, a comment about, uh, uh, input on tree types, uh, after one of our Urban Forestry Council meetings. Um, he seemed to imply that I wanted the recommendation to be that we shouldn't change tree types. Um, but in reality, what had happened is I personally am not an expert in trees. Um, we took the question we had heard with some suggestions of specific tree types to the experts on our design team at Public Works and Urban Forestry and Landscape Architecture. Um, we had a phone call where they advised on, um, why those trees would not be the right ones for this location. I summarized what I thought I heard them say on the phone and then I asked them to make sure it was accurate before sending it back to this member of the public. Um, and then finally, I think some of the, um, discussion today that I've heard is, is beyond the scope of the Geary Rapid Project specifically and relates to, um, either agency-wide or city-wide concerns about doing everything we can to preserve and expand our urban forest. Um, I think that, you know, some of that feedback is useful and I'd definitely like to share it, you know, more broadly with the agency, but I also want to be careful to not saddle one project with trying to solve, you know, our entire urban forest challenges. And I think, you know, this project is demonstrating, we, we've really tried to go and, uh, above and beyond what is required. Uh, we've already exceeded everything we were supposed to do. We continue to engage and, um, to the extent possible, um, add to our mitigation measures, uh, because we share the same values. Um, and so, yeah, we look forward to hearing the decision and thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you for your comments, Ms. Bryson. Um, and I want to thank, uh, all the parties for your attention today and your input, uh, your willingness and patience to, uh, hang on for two hours. Um, I hope to have a decision out within, uh, 15 days or so and, um, I anticipate that the, uh, the decision would be published, uh, in normal channels that are followed by, uh, under the, the project, uh, or the Public Works Code. Um, not sure what that is at this point, but, uh, we'll, we'll follow, uh, regular procedures. And, um, we're planning to update our webpages so that, uh, in the future, people will be, uh, able to realize the process and the procedures that, uh, are going to be, uh, occurring in, uh, future hearings by this hearing section. So again, I want to thank everyone for, uh, your participation today and, um, uh, we'll probably be seeing you later. Thank you very much.
James, before, before we adjourn, just very quickly, uh, we got, I think, at least one more email, uh, that came in, but, uh,
Okay.
So if that person is listening, I'll just let them know that, uh, we'll, you know, that email will be forwarded to you for consideration.
That's right.
Um, and then also on the screen, I have the, um, the project or the hearing website. Uh, the, the short URL is being displayed right now. Um, it's sfmta.com node, N-O-D-E, forward slash 23663. That's the easiest way to get to the, um, the project or the hearing website. And then, um, we'll continue as, as, uh, Mr. Doyle stated, to monitor the email. If you had any questions, um, or follow-up or feedback regarding today's hearing, uh, the email address again is hearingsgeneral@sfmta.com.
And thanks for all of your help today, Akem. It's very, very helpful.
Of course.
More than I could do by myself.
No problem. Thank you. Okay. Did you want to, I guess, adjourn? It's 12:07.
Yeah, I think we're, we're in adjournment.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, James.